Texas, and this is Ms. Larissa Rios. She is a Deputy, Volunteer Deputy Register for San Patricio, one of them. And Jimmy, right over here, he is also, and he's helping us out with getting people registered today.
Just a quick reminder that if you still have time to register, you can do that online. So after midnight, right, it's the deadline.
Today is the last day, and we are here to get everyone registered at the last minute.
So if you want to come down here, we can get it done on person, or you can do it online. Okay? It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you again, and thank you, Reuben, from FYI, Aransas Pass, for livestreaming for us today. We're really excited to have everyone here. We have Richard, Luanna, Ruth, Andy, and Jason. They are all here with the general election, as the candidates for the general election. So my purpose as a volunteer deputy registrar is to get as many people registered as I can, and help others get out and get excited to vote. I invited our current general election candidate today to garner more attention and attract more potential voters to come out. So without ado, we're gonna go ahead and get started. All candidates will have three minutes each to answer the question. All candidates will have no prior notes or electronics. And all candidates have agreed to the acknowledgement of integrity. Let's get started. Okay, everybody, I'm gonna set our timer. Okay, I've got my timer set for three minutes. We'll start with you, Richard. I'll start the timer after I ask your question. The first one is going to be, what makes you the best person for the role you are running for? And what are your qualifications?
Well, my qualifications are, as I've worked for the government, state, counties, cities, and everything, all in the plumbing industry. And I've learned how to deal with people, whether they were an official person, or a business, or anything like that. And one of the main problems is, this council, the old council, needs to change so that the new council can come in here and start doing what should have been done a long, long time back. And it's, it just, there's gotta be a definite change, a serious change. And people have to understand, the old ones need to go bye-bye. So, I mean, just, I might not be the best candidate, and I'm new to this kind of stuff, but I'm being sure I wanna come in here and try to do my best to help straighten the city out because it's got way too many problems in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Luanna, give me one second. I'll repeat the question for you. What makes you the best person for the role you're running for? And what are your qualifications?
Well, I worked for Corporate America for 19 years as a sous-executive. I also went to work for a national coffee company for 13 years. And with that company, I was Account Executive of the Year 2015. But I was also part of the group that was hand-selected to write our core values for the company. I was also People Pick certified, so I was involved in the interviewing and hiring process. So I'm very, very proud of those accomplishments. It definitely shows a lot of leadership and skill. Also bought a new truck that we still have to this day, but we've had it five years. But during COVID, when people said that was the wrongest time, that was actually the best time ever. Since then, we purchased a business here downtown. And the business that we purchased was only open on Tuesday nights, and every other month for a play. And we're open all the time. And people are now getting to know us, they know we're there. So I've definitely turned our little business around, and I believe I can also do it for the city as well.
Thank you, Luanna. One second. I'll repeat the question. What makes you the best person for the role you're running for? And what are your qualifications?
Okay, so I believe to be a part of the council, first and foremost, you need to show up. So I feel that I've already done that and proven that. Along with this Q and A, there's been other events, and I've made it a priority to be there, and be there to speak to the citizens. I've been a native of Aransas Pass for 45 years. I've seen the ups and the downs of this city, and it saddens me that it's at a standstill. And there's not more development, there's not more businesses coming in. 2017 was Hurricane Harvey, Caribean Gulf closed. And I don't feel the leadership since then has done anything to increase the healthcare for residents here in Aransas Pass. My background is primarily healthcare, but I also own a business, a good business. And then I also have lots of leadership experience. As a manager, supervisor, I led a team of 85. I've actually evacuated for hurricanes before in the hospital. I've led the team, flown in a helicopter, rode in the back of an ambulance. I've done a lot of things over my 24 years in my career. But I'm just tired of seeing what's happening to our city. And that's what made me step up and want to improve things for our residents. And I think it's time for that.
Thank you, Luanna. Andy? What makes you the best person for the role you're running for? And what are your qualifications?
First of all, what makes me the best person for this role is, not that you have to be a native, a lifer in a town, but I think it helps to know the whole town, you know? And to love it the way I do, that's one qualification, you know? That's what gives me a role, right? Is to love the town and love the people. And to want to do nothing but good for it, you know? That's what, that's what makes me what I feel is the best role person for this position, place three. And my qualifications are, is that I've been here, besides the time that I was in the military, and the times that I was working out of town as a certified well inspector in pipelines, running pipelines in Wyoming, and Oklahoma, and Texas. Being over companies, just making sure everything's done correctly. Times that I was in other countries like Canada and Mexico, over projects like for Exxon or BP Marathon. Being one of the clients for those big oil companies, you know, makes me, I feel, makes me qualified. The leadership that I had in those roles, you know? As just a native, you know? Being able to deal with the people and wanting the best for the people. And not just the people in certain areas, I mean, in all areas, you know? Nobody should be let down. And I feel that you have to be, you want that and be qualified for that, right? Because not everybody gets help, not everybody gets hurt, right? Where I come from, in this town, we always think it's seen and heard, right? And I don't want those people to get left out anymore. So, but going back to my qualifications, I mean, I started off Marine after I came back to the military, and worked my way up as a welder and was a foreman. And then I turned, I did that for five years. I ran the NDE department, and I controlled all the wells that came through. What they did on all those projects, which were big projects, and they included thousands of wells a week, and I had to make sure those were input correctly and managed that. I had worked with a lot of people, worked with clients and stuff in that situation also. So I feel that my qualifications are there to help.
Thank you so much, Andy. Jason? What makes you the best person for the role you're running for? And what are your qualifications?
Well, I'll be 48 years old next month. I was born in the hospital here, I've lived here my entire life. I've had the privilege of knowing personally all six police chiefs we've had. I've known council members and mayors going back to the early 60s here. And my dad, who first got on council in '78, was mayor several times, and got off in 2012. So needless to say, I've had crash course on city governing and city policy in Aransas Pass my entire life. And I feel I'm the better choice because I understand the city charter like the back of my hand, I can recite it in my sleep. The mayor's sole purpose on council is to conduct smooth and orderly council meetings, give some ideas to the council, let the council members be the legislating body, and the mayor should be a tiebreaker vote whenever you get a stalemate on the council. And right now, I got elected to council, city council, on city council place two currently. I got elected in 2020, so I'm going on my third term. And I feel there needs to be a change in the middle seat. And that's why I'm asking everyone for their vote to be mayor this May third.
Thank you, Jason. We'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and start again, Jason.
You vote me?
All righty, Jason, so what is one project that you wanna start if you are elected?
I wanna start talking to the Chamber of Commerce and other council members about moving Shrimpree back to Combar Harbor. Because where the shrimp reef is now, there's, the parking is getting out of hand. I mean, people have to park across 361 and park in front of houses, blocks and blocks in off the main thoroughfare. And at the same time, moving the shrimp reef back on the harbor, that is how you can get new eyes on getting the harbor developed at, I believe, at accelerated rate. And it's knocking two birds out of one stone because if we get the shrimp reef away from where it's at now, we can turn that property into like a soccer field, pickleball court. I see that whole area by the body center just designated for kids. And I would jump on that if day one went right.
Wonderful. Andy? What is the one project that you wanna start if you are elected?
Well, that was part of what I wanted to say, but that's a good idea that he has. You know, I've talked to other council members about moving the shrimp reef. For the reason, my reason would be because if you, there's a gold mine out there, and it's beautiful out there. You know? And if you move it over there and people see the view, it's just beautiful. It's just gonna draw more people, you're gonna have people from, that never been that close to the ocean, to be there to see all that. But anyway, what I would wanna do besides that, since he said that, I would, I would say, what I wanna do, you gotta beautify Aransas, you know? Everybody wants it to change, well, you gotta change the look of it, you know? You got the north side over here on 35, all that coming through. And even in areas here, some of these buildings, you know, these business owners, they can't afford to fix their properties or something like that. Maybe there's something that we could do as a council, as a city, to pitch in or something. You know, you do have what you have. You invest in businesses and property owners like that, it's like an investment. And then once you beautify the town, well, people just ain't gonna cruise by to get to their destination because their destination right now is Aransas Pass. It's going to Port Aransas. But if you beautify it, you fix that north side, and people come through, and you have them turn left up there, one of those roads, instead of going through, you have them turn left, and they see the prettiness as they're coming through, and they go to the harbor. Well, they're gonna see it, they're gonna slow down instead of trying to rush to get through the town. So for me, it's like cleaning your yard. You clean your yard up, you cruise by, people do the double take, say, wow, that's a nice yard. So Aransas's council members and citizens, you make Aransas Pass prettier, people are gonna say, wow, that's pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty. And they're gonna slow down, they're gonna say, well, what else do they have? And then once the harbor gets going with businesses, well, they're gonna be more than happy to take that left and get up, up there on that hill, you know what I mean? So that's what I wanna work on first, if I'm being elected.
Thank you. Ruth? What is one project that you want to start if you're elected?
You're gonna hear healthcare, healthcare, and healthcare for Aransas Pass. I, speaking more with citizens, I have an elderly neighbor who has two very recent emergencies that he's had to, you know, be seen for. And he just tells me, Ruth, if you can get an ER here, like, that would be amazing. You know, people are tired of going into Corpus or Portland or Rockport to get their healthcare needs met. If elected, my plan is to just continue that route. I'm already actually fostering those relationships and networking. I already have a scheduled walkthrough of a facility with the Amistad CEO coming up next week. So I'm already doing the work. I just wanna continue to do the work for Aransas Pass. I'd love to see, I say that I'd love to see a hospital here, that's, that's a grand thing to say. So I don't wanna just put that out there quite yet. But I have been doing research. I researched another city with our population. They had a hospital, a nursing home, they had several ERs, 41 physicians, and within their area. And ours is desperate, and we really need to get fixed healthcare here. And that's, I would, initially, besides doing the walkthrough with the CEO, I would love to bring local physicians, anybody with healthcare, I'm thinking, you know, nursing facility owners, you know, CEOs that manage ERs, urgent cares, even outpatient, you know, care centers. Those are real common, like the TLC and Corpus. I'd love to just beat their brain and say, will y'all please come here? Aransas Pass needs you, and what can we do to bring your services straight? And that's it.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thanks.
Luanna? What is one project that you wanna start if you're elected?
Thank you for asking. Well, I, as Ruth, have actually restarted my project, what I would like to see happen. I tend to think opposite of everybody else. I don't like to put the cart before the horse, I like to start with foundation. Our community has very few too little services for our community. There are various support groups I would like to start. One I restarted, I cannot announce it because of its sensitivity. I cannot announce the place, date, or time, but just know, it's, the first meeting happened last week. We're not waiting on the city to do this, we can do it. Another support group I'd like to have is autism. This side of the bridge, there ain't nothing for our parents, for our kids, to learn how to, a parent to learn how to deal with someone who's autistic, to get the tools needed and necessary. There's no place to take the kids for a sensory group. Women of courage, I refuse to call them battered women, they're already tacked enough, they're already beaten enough. I would like to start a women encouraged group. Again, start with the basics and then build up. Veterans, they need a support group for veterans. Amputee support group. When my husband and I first met, he went monthly to a veteran's support group. And it was amazing to see a new amputee, from day one that I met them, to a year later, on how they had improved, how they were able to cope, the skills they were able to get, to be able to maneuver through life accordingly. And the whole way we clean our homelessness, our panhandling, and everything else that's involved, is starting with the basics. Thank you. Hope to hear your thoughts on that, Mr. Paster.
Thank you, Luanna. Richard? What is one project that you wanna start if you're elected?
Well, actually, there's too many. But the main one is to start upgrading this infrastructure of this town. Every time it rains, they backwash the horse manes, which come out of the manholes. The lines aren't big enough, we need to go down and take, get all of this old pipe out. We need to get all of the old water lines out that are a rock type of material to be putting water through because they're so old. The main thing is, we've got to, the plumbing problem that's wrong with this town needs to be fixed, straightened up as fast as it can be, however it can be. Because right now, the town can't handle all the new construction and add-ons that's going on here. It is overloading this infrastructure of this city, which it can't handle already. It couldn't handle it when I moved here, that's why there's 12 different locations. And every time they backwash the horse manes, they pop out of the sewer holes. And then where does it go? Runs right down to brand-new storm drains, especially right here at my house. And where do those brand-new storm drains go? To the bay, period. And the city knows from the past, they've got 12 locations that disperse way too much waste that goes to the bay. I mean, I can sit here and talk drugs, we need to try to clean the drug situation up in this town. I could say some things right now while we're talking to the public, but it'd be unfair for those people that I would be speaking about because they're not here. But one of the main things is the infrastructure, clean up the drugs. And as several people have said, the image of this town is an image of the past council. And what do you see when you drive through this town on both main ways to come in? Nothing but empty, lappetined buildings that need to be tore down and bring new business here somehow, some way, and make the fees and the permits and stuff like that where they're affordable to bring people here. Because the way they are right now, it's out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We're gonna go ahead and get to that next question. Will you want to, can you, can we start? Third question. What is one decision that the previous council made that you wanna change or add to as soon as you're elected?
Again, something to do with all these fees, the permits, and all this kind of stuff. There's been too many problems, especially with me, since I've been building my own house. I've been in the middle of this project, I'm starting my fourth year. And then when the city changed, all of their computers or whatever, all of a sudden, they don't have my paperwork. And then I have to go in and redo this, and redo that, and resubmit this, and resubmit that, and go spend money again that I've already spent once. And that should be unacceptable to anybody that works on the city council or any of the businesses that run the city. It needs to be changed and fixed and looked at.
Thank you, Richard. Luanna, what is one decision that the previous council made that you want to change or add to as soon as you're elected?
Okay, so this is one of my biggest pet peeves. And I will say, in, for, out of respect for city council, the way it was presented is not the person who shouldn't have made the presentation. I'm talking about the Charter Review Committee and inventory control. When the attorney mentioned inventory control, yes, it is happening currently. However, what he didn't understand, because he was not the attorney of record who helped us work through the charter, he didn't know what we were referring to. What we're referring to is, right now, our city only inventories assets of $3,000 or more. And when asked, the reason was, oh, well, that's what our auditor requires. What do we require as a city? Why can't we have our own standards? In my opinion, everything from $1 to $2,999, that being cell phones, computers, lawnmowers, blowers, printers, anything that has a serial number, needs to be inventoried. It leaves way too much room for discretion for people to make bad decisions. And we need to nip it and see how much I would actually save us. How difficult would it be, you ask? It's an Excel spreadsheet, it's a working Excel spreadsheet. You buy an item, you list the item, the date that you purchased it, how much you paid for it, who it went to. The person who's, you're giving it to or who purchased it signs, have you received it? The person moves on for whatever reason, they sign a form, have you returned it? You keep it, it's an active worksheet, so once you build it, you're golden. Right now, we're not doing that unless it's $3,000 or more. Well, I'm so sorry, but $2,999 times how much? That's a lot of money to our city that we could potentially be saving.
Thank you, Luanna. Ruth? What is one decision that the previous council made that you want to change or add to as soon as you are elected?
I think my main concern that the previous council has had to deal with is the budget. I was astonished when I learned that there was no funds in the budget for streets. It's my understanding, there wasn't at one point, but then that money was pulled out by the previous city manager. And some of the council were unaware of that situation. So not a single street has been repaired in Aransas Pass, and there's no money budgeted for a single street repair. I drive down 13th Street every day. Every day I'll drive down that street. As a matter of fact, one of the other council members lives down that street. And it's terrible. It's, it's, it's god awful. You know, our housing authority lives down that street. It's bad on both sides, the north and the south. And it just really astonishes me that that money was taken out without, without a discussion with some of the council members. I mean, that's an important issue. Everybody, almost every single citizen that I talk to, there's lots of concerns, but everybody says streets. There's not a single person that says streets are not an issue in Aransas. And that's one thing I think that really needs to be addressed. And that's one thing I would have changed that a previous council had to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Andy? What is one decision that the previous council made that you wanna change or add to as soon as you're elected?
Well, everything they talked about is, are issues that most of the people know that's a problem for Aransas Pass and the people that live there. And, you know, it's gonna be said and heard until things are done, right? You know, previous councils, they've ignored it. And those are big issues, and I think it's, whoever wins, whoever wins are the people that are here. I know they, they want the best, you know, I would bet on that, right?
Yes, sir.
So whoever it is, I have the confidence with, with this guy right here, the mayor, the new mayor, and whoever else ran, and I think they're gonna all do good for those big projects. But what I would do, what I would do, we got the harbor, right? And this, this is smaller than those big projects they're talking about. It's something people probably don't even talk about, right? It's moving, moving more events to the harbor. All the events are held here, you know? And sometimes it, parking lots are held, you know, when they have events outside. You know, and sometimes I cruise through there, and they got an event, and there's nobody there. So you wanna draw people, right? You get people to go to the harbor, and you have more events there for the, for the public, for the people that are held annually. You know, instead of having them here, why can't you have them over there, right? People will leave here, they'll talk about where it was held at, and it might draw more people because, I mean, that's, it's beautiful out there, I think we all know that. So it's small compared to what, what they're saying, but those are big items that we all know about. For me, it'd be something that's not talked about that would help bring revenue and everything to Aransas. And that's what I would do.
Andy, I'm gonna go ahead and give you a double question.
Me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's not fair.
It's gonna make it fair.
No, we're good, I'm just joking.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't get to answer the last one, right? I'm gonna let you answer that, and then, oh man, I was gonna try and double it. Let's see if I can do that. You know what, let's go ahead and do it, and then we'll let you answer that. So, Andy, what are your plans for the harbor?
Well, we, we want it to grow, we wanna, we wanna do the leasing thing, you know? Something they've said that they've had issues with over the years, but that there's always been issues with the leasing. I just think it's just something they've never really put on the table. You know, like, they've always held it down, right? And so what I would do, I would do work with the rest of the council to do, to straighten that leasing. Whatever, whatever it takes, 40-year leases, 50-year leases, 60-year leases. I was looking at the news the other day, and they're leasing a building in Corpus for 80 years or 90 years. It was, so why can't we do that? That's what's, that's what they've said has helped business away from Oranza's Pass. Oh, well, if we wanna fill up that harbor, and we want to start doing the right thing for Oranza's Pass, it shouldn't be a big issue to give the, the people that we want to come and build here the lease that they, that would make them comfortable, you know? What is it costing the, the citizens? It's not costing them nothing. What it's costing them is not keeping it from growing because they've never, they've never really sat down and tried to get it right. And I know that that's, and on the mindset of all these guys here. Whoever wins, they want, I think they would agree with me with that. And it's not as hard as they made it seem before, so that's, that's, that's what I would try to do, is get that leasing thing going so we can get some stuff going down there at the harbor.
Excellent. Thank you, Andy. We'll go back to question three for you, Jason. One second. What is one decision that the previous council made that you want to change or add to as soon as you're elected?
Well, I guess this one's already happened, but we're still dealing with it. I mean, I could look out the window, and I think to that fire station that was gonna be built. Well, that finally got squashed, and we're doing a remodel to build new facilities for firefighters. And what I'm going to do is make sure that it is done cost-effectively because what the firefighters need, because I've spoke with them, we have some firefighters that are buying their own bunker here because the fire station doesn't have money for it. And they would like to get a Class 6 brush truck. Like, the last time we had a fire out here to the north, I know we've got five tons of deuce and a half, but those things are probably 50 years old. Parts are getting hard to find. People that work on them are getting hard to find. And that's why I spoke with the firemen, because they're the ones using this split. And I trust them. We have a pretty good group of guys that's firefighters. And it won't be a big chunk of money out of that, that CO that we got. And the remainder of that money, when everything is done, where it's basically responsible, we will have a lot of money left over that we can do some pretty serious street repair projects. And I would definitely stay on top of that and see it finished beautifully.
Thank you, Jason. We'll go ahead and go with Ruth for the next question. It's gonna be number four. Ruth, what are your plans for the harbor?
The harbor, Combs Brown Harbor, it is our treasure here in Oranza's Pass. Everybody wants a piece of the harbor. They all, everyone has an opinion, so I think it's important to listen to everybody. You know, everybody thinks, you know, we should do this on the harbor, or this on the harbor. You're not gonna please everybody. But if you're asking me what I want on the harbor, then I would like to see some methodical development. That's good planning, organizing, some businesses down there, shops, restaurants, things like that. Things are gonna, they're gonna create jobs for Oranza's Pass. We don't have any jobs here. And if, you know, our youth is growing up, and they're having to drive to Portland, my daughter right now drives to Portland. She makes good money in Portland. People are spending their tax dollars there. We want people to come and spend their money here. And you can, you can have a win-win. You create jobs, you build some shops, restaurants down there, things that are going to bring in money and also create jobs. That's what I'd like to see on the harbor.
Thank you, Ruth. Luanna, what are your plans for the harbor?
The harbor, it'd be, yeah, Ruth said it'd be less of a harbor, it's absolutely beautiful. I would like to, again, stay with basics. What are we known for? We're known for fishing and shrimping in the day. I would like to see it fishing-related. Of course, put restaurants and little boutiques and little shops. But we definitely need more fishing docks and fishing slots and, you know, all that kind of stuff for the fishermen to be able to dock their boat and go to different shops, different restaurants, what have you. What we have right now is not sufficient. We need more of it. There's no reason to rewrite the book. Let's just make the book better. Let's focus on who we are, what we know. I would love the shrimping industry to come back. Why can't we focus on that and see what we can do to bring that back to what we were known for and what we're still known for? That's what I would like to see happen with the harbor. Do we need amphitheater? I've heard people say we need amphitheater. We know we don't. Why? We have 8,000 people. The Civic Center today, they're not booked every day, seven days a week, and busting out the seams. Civic Center's not doing well financially. They're not paying for themselves. Why in the world would our city go and buy another amphitheater? And be in debt, save our money, when we can use this facility or other locations throughout our town? Doesn't make any sense. Again, let's stay back with the basics, which is our fishing industry and our shrimping, or what was our shrimping industry, and see what we can't do to get that to help us grow our little town. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanna. I'm gonna give you a double question once more, and we'll go right back to you, Richard, with number four. Number five, Luanna, what is the biggest challenge facing Oranza's Pass now, and how would you tackle it?
Jobs. Jobs is our biggest challenge. People can't afford to live here because they don't make a living wage. We have got to work with different industries to get them in here, whether it be through taxes, incentives, or what have you, to get them to come and open a business in our, in our little town. We also need to get our town to support our local businesses and not go out to neighboring businesses. The only way our local businesses are gonna survive is if the people who live here support us. It's basic economics. You know, it's not rocket science, guys. We have got to create jobs if this town wants to grow. How do you create jobs? You get businesses. The businesses will bring the people in. The people will spend their money. That money will go to taxes. With that tax money, you have stuff, money to do other things like the street and water infrastructure and so forth. That's what I would like to do.
Thank you, Luanna. All right, Mr. Richard. What are your plans for the harbor?
Well, I'm in agreement with everybody here about taking the shrimpery over there, bringing the shrimp boats back here. That place has to be making money. That's what it was for, that's what it's there for. For shrimping industries and things like that. The city needs, it's got to bring businesses back and, and clean up the image. It looks pretty nice over there now, but it could be a whole lot nicer, especially if the shrimping industry was back here, and even other industries. You know, somewhere along the waterfront over there, some more restaurants or something like that. Try to draw saltwater community people to that area.
Thank you, Richard. Go ahead and, let's start with Ruth for the next question. Were you finished?
Yes, we got one.
Ruth, what is the biggest challenge facing Oranza's Pass now, and how would you tackle it?
You're gonna be surprised, the lack of healthcare. I am incredibly passionate about bringing healthcare resources here to Oranza's Pass. I have grandchildren of seven and eight on the way. My grandkids' after-hours care have to drive to Corpus. We don't have any kind of after-hours care here. There's nothing for our elderly, you know, if, simple thing. Well, not simple. I'm a nurse, so to me, a, you know, a, a cut that needing stitches is a simple thing. But you don't even have somebody to go, you don't have a location to take minor emergencies to. We have to have that care. That's, that's first and foremost. I'm gonna hit the ground running with that, healthcare. And I think that you want a healthy community. You want those, not just for emergencies, but you need, I did what's called a windshield survey for my bachelor, for my bachelor's degree. And Oranza's Pass was, had a high, high rates of obesity, hypertension, diabetes, high crime. There's no walking spaces. Every, there was not much good that I could report on in, in my evaluation. So it really saddened me. At that time, I wasn't in a place to make those changes for Oranza's Pass, but I am now. And so I want to see the community be healthier. I think that, I love Mexican restaurants. We got a ton of them. But we don't have an urgent care. We don't have clinics, facilities to treat our elderly. And I think that's a disservice for our elderly community that's here, for our children. You know, I don't just think about me. I think, okay, after I'm gone, my kids are gonna be here, my great-grandkids are gonna be here. Where are they gonna get services at? They, we have to leave it better for them, and that's, that's my goal.
Thank you, Ruth. I'm gonna give you a double question. Number six, Oranza's Pass has a huge litter and dumping problem that has not been addressed in decades. What do you propose to solve this issue?
Don't I know this. If my husband was here, he would tell you. We had a huge issue with property that we had. We cleaned it up, and it got dumped on again. One of the, one of the ways that, when talking to neighbors and things, that I thought was a good idea was the city cameras. In those locations that are prevalent with illegal dumping and littering, using the city cameras in those areas. And then, when you catch them, do something about it. Find them, you know, take action. Don't let them get away with it. I think that's, that's probably like a good plan. If we have those cameras available throughout the city, I think we could address that issue and nip it in the butt. The other thing is having access to our local dump. Just making sure that they're allowing, you know, residents to bring in, you know, their trash and dump it there appropriately. And the other thing we, I think we all took part in was the Oranza's Pass, the cleanup Oranza's Pass. There were trailers coming, loaded with big mattresses, couches, just things that if we, I feel like if we wouldn't have gotten rid of them that day, that they would be illegally dumped or placed somewhere at this time. So doing more things like that for the city to clean it up is a good, is a good idea.
Thank you, Ruth. We're gonna go back to Richard for question number five. And then after Richard, we'll start again with Jason. Richard, what is the biggest challenge facing Oranza's Pass now, and how would you tackle it?
The biggest problem is drugs, and not enough businesses in this community anymore. This is already a poor community. And it's gonna take a long time to try to straighten it out anyway. It's not an overnight fix. It can't even be fixed in a year or two. It's gonna take a very long time to fix it. One of the main things that needs to be done is that waste center station over there, our litter station over there, it needs to be upgraded and done as fast as can be done with the money that it takes. Because it's gonna take a lot of money to upgrade all of this, these systems, like down the alleys. I'm still on three-inch, I mean, six-inch plate pipe. Every three-foot pieces, they do like this. And the, that's part of the infrastructure. It has to be corrected. I'm still on an asbestos-concreted water line that was in my alley. You know how bad that water is to drink, that? Besides, too bad, very bad for you? Anyway, that's, just trying to fix the main infrastructure problems that this community has with what money they have, or how we can do it, and how to get it done. I'm a licensed plumber of 47 years, so I think I know what I'm talking about when it comes to the infrastructure of this city. It needs to be seriously upgraded. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jason. Oranza's Pass has a huge litter and dumping problem that has not been addressed in decades. What do you propose to solve this issue?
Skip five.
Did we skip five?
Yep.
Oh, I'm so sorry. What is the biggest challenge facing Oranza's Pass now, and how would you tackle it?
The biggest problem we have is around the $40, $90 debt we have currently. Because all politics relative. And with things going crazy with the federal government, all it would take is for the housing market bubble to burst here in town, and property values fall through the floor. We'd have to raise the city tax rate probably 10 cents or higher. I've talked to the mayor of Ingleside and some of the council members brought it forward to figure out what they're doing to get businesses in. I finally figured out what they're doing. I want to implement an economic development director for Oranza's Pass. Because the way a business owner comes to Oranza's, wanna set up shop, they have to either call City Hall or meet with the city manager. City manager already has a lot of supply to deal with employees and day-to-day operations in the city. The sole job as economic development director would be to advertise and go out to the business owner, invite him to town. They could take him around, show him lots for sale, show him around the harbor, and tell him, say, well, I think the council might wanna sweeten the deal to get you here, and we'll get you on the agenda. And another thing to help with that would be to streamline permitting here. If you apply for a permit, you should have to bounce around all over town for four, five, or six different permits. You can go to the public board, tell them you wanna build a house or a new business, they give you a permit at a low fee. Because probably have right now, there's no foresight. It's like people stick their hand out, how much do you give me today? And you have to have business, start with incentives for any business owner in the United States. And I think streamlining that process and even giving some breaks, like we could cut water tap fees. We could even waive permit fees just to accelerate any new businesses here because that's the only way we could accelerate on paying to buy annual debt payment down at a, at a quicker rate. I mean, just to tell you how bad it is, we make a debt payment twice a year that equals around $3.7 million. That debt payment itself eats up 50 cent, about 50% of property taxes collected in town. So if we didn't have this astronomical debt, your tax rate could, could realistically be around 57 cents per hundred, and the city would still have contingency built into what they're collecting. So an economic development director, that's probably the first thing I'm gonna start wishing for after the election.
Thank you. Number five.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the biggest challenge facing Oranza's Pass now, and how would you tackle it?
Well, everybody's got their views on what they've said about the challenges, facing challenges, you know? Luanna's came up with something really good with jobs, you know? But it takes, it takes development. It takes, you know, you gotta have places to build, the harbor. It's all, everything goes back to the harbor. But you want jobs, and you want people to stay in Oranza's. So you, you wanna, you want to, excuse me. You want to develop the harbor, bring jobs, and you want to fix the infrastructure. You wanna fix the roads going to the harbor. And to help develop places like the harbor, right? To bring the people in, okay? Yeah, that's what, that's.
Sounds good.
Go ahead.
The littering?
You already answered that one.
I did. So we'll...
Me and him are on five.
We all go there on five. Everyone else is on six.
Okay, we'll do six.
I have to start at six.
I think I'm the only one that's on six.
You're the only one?
Okay, Jason, we'll start with six. Number six, Oranza's Pass has had a huge litter and dumping problem that has not been addressed in decades. What do you propose to solve this issue?
Well, we recently installed a scale at the city dump, and it hasn't come back to the council yet on what we're gonna do as far as charging fees to use the scale. But I've said it for years, we need to make it easily accessible to the residents of Oranza's Pass. And I have proposed, if you live in the city limits of Oranza's Pass, or if you live in the ETJ, that's the boundary from the city limits. So we're a home-level city. That's your extraterritorial jurisdiction. That's if you wanna annex, that's a roomy expansion, too. Then that goes from a mile out from the city limits. So even if you live in ETJ, your driver's license still says Oranza's Pass. So I think anyone that shows up to the dump and they have a driver's license that says Oranza's Pass, they get a lower charge. they get a lower charge than someone that comes from out of the ETJ or city limits, or if they're a major builder, they're hauling a lot of debris into the dump. And another thing, uh, working with the, uh, city attorney to increase the fees, and to make pill fees a little more severe, because that itself is probably the only way you're gonna, you're gonna nip illegal dumping, and then try and get it, get it out. I mean, you're never gonna, you're never gonna get a, to do totally away with it, but you can take a big chunk out of it, especially with, uh, fees, fines, and a little more hard bill.
Thank you, Jason. Andy?
I think, I think, uh, you need to put cameras, I think, I think you need to involve, I think they do, uh, most of the dumping, illegal dumping, like in the evenings at night, you know, when people settle in for the night, and, or early in the morning before people get out. With what I know, with people from back in the day, when I was young, they did that kind of business, that's what they would do. And that's when they would do it, right? They wouldn't go out there when people get off of work and stuff like that, they'd take their trailer full, they'd take it home. And they would, they would leave, ten, eleven o'clock at night, people settle in, or they would do it in the morning, before daylight. So, uh, going back to what I'm, what I was saying, I think we need to involve, like during the night or during those hours, with all the police force that we have here. You know, I don't know what they do, maybe it's too much for them, but put them on patrol in some areas, the areas hit areas, and have one cop per certain area just cruise around, you know, instead of, I don't know if they sit in office and drink coffee, I don't know. But they could be out in the streets, a little bit more, uh, and then you might be able to stop other things going on, uh, if you're out there patrolling and, and watching for that. But I, I would definitely put cameras and, and try to nip it in the bud that way, because they don't wanna pay the fee, right? Some people, some people just don't want to, and I know that, not from experience, 'cause I never did that kind of work, but I know people that did it, and they didn't, they didn't want to pay the fee, so, I mean, you know, I, I, I know from, from people that I know that have done it, to be honest with you, so. Uh, they definitely need to get caught now with, 'cause all these people, or, you know, there's plenty of people now, but even if they were caught, got caught back then, but they've never done nothing about it. But I think it's, uh, something that, uh, more city officials need to get involved with it, and, and maybe start nipping it in the bud a little bit.
Thank you. Luanna? Aransas Pass has had a huge litter and dumping problem that has not been addressed in decades. What do you propose to solve this issue?
Well, we definitely need a bigger police presence, um, we need the police out there, monitoring, driving, finding. We need them to issue tickets to these people who are littering, that's why they're littering, they're not being issued tickets. Um, why, I know there's a logistic, more logistics involved, and, um, responsibility and so forth, but why could we not work with the judges and the probation officers, with the people on probation, to use their probation time needed to go and clean these places on a regular basis? Our Clean Green cannot do it all, our volunteers cannot do it all. We have got to have other people that we have in our town who owe us time to get involved. You know, I understand there's liability, do we need to pull an insurance policy to cover them? They're on probation, assign an intern with them, if we have interns, to go and oversee them. Maybe put them with somebody in public works, if public works, go paint, go mow the parks, let this person go with them to clean the parks. Um, why couldn't we start a neighborhood crime, crime watch? You know, that's what your bigger cities do, am I trying to make Aransas Pass a big city? Under no circumstances, I can make that very, very clear. Steve and I came from a big city. But we can learn what big cities do, and implement some of the things that they do, which a lot of them do have a neighborhood crime watch, which is nothing but volunteers who say, yes, I can work these days, I can roam, you know, between these hours, and you make a list, and somebody heads it up and so forth. There's things we can do as a community, but we definitely need more police presence, and the police have got to start to issue fines. And I wish I included this, because it is a, a big issue, I need to text it to Jason the other night, speed. We have got to stop this speeders within our town. Our children are gonna get killed, our elderly is gonna get killed, they are gonna get killed. They go down Commercial Street like Banshees, they go down Deberry like Banshees, they go down McCambe like Banshees.
South right.
South right, where are the police? Our neighborhood crime watch can be out there, I don't want neighborhood crime watchers, they're not, um, um, prepared to take matters into their own hands. But they could definitely get license plate numbers and so forth. You know, I know Steve, being a veteran, there was a time where he could actually write tickets to people parked in handicap zones that were not handicapped. Maybe something like that could be, could be put into effect. But whatever happens, we need to make sure we do it for everybody safe, and nobody gets hurt. But those fines that we could issue, I'm not saying be another Portland, under no circumstances. I hate going through Portland, because they will pull you over for the stupidest little thing, give you a ticket for it. But those are resources that we are missing on, because we're not currently enforcing to the level of where we possibly could be or should be. That's what I would like to see happen.
Thank you, Luanna. Richard? Aransas Pass has a huge litter and dumping problem that has not been addressed in decades. What do you propose to solve this issue?
I'm in agreement with every one of these panel members up here on the dumping part. I'm gonna change and go a little bit more to the litter problem. This town allows you to put your trash and stuff out on the sun road in front of your house, and let it get picked up. Well, we need to enforce three days ahead of time, not a month, not three weeks, not two weeks, for that trash to sit out there, and then other people come and start throwing their trash and other people's trash. If the city ordinances don't cover to write them tickets, and all that, to enforce it, that needs to be changed. And then code enforcement needs to go around and start doing their job, and issuing citations. Give you three days to solve the problem, if they don't do it, right? Write them a ticket, and from every day then port, just like Porter Aransas does, you have three days to fix the problem, if it doesn't get fixed, you're, you're fined fifteen hundred dollars, and it is fifteen hundred dollars a day, however long it takes you to clean the mess up, and solve the problem. We need to stop seeing all this trash in front of everybody's house, when you drive through my whole community area over there, half of the houses, just a number I'm throwing out there, but about half of the houses have crap sitting in front of their house. That just sits there, and sits there, and sits there, it gets rained on, it gets scattered, the wind blows it around, and that is a very serious problem, so I, um, code enforcement needs to be made, start writing citations, and I understand that, you know, the city can't even do it, how do you expect the, the people of the community to enforce it if the city doesn't enforce it? So, code enforcement needs to step up, and start writing tickets, and let me tell you, they'll fix, they'll clean the city up by doing it, and they will also, the people that don't wanna do it, the city will be making a revenue off, uh, issuing those citations to people.
I'm gonna give you a double question, Richard. How do you feel, for number seven, how do you feel about the public transportation options in our city? Many residents in Aransas Pass are homebound and cannot afford to leak it to where they need to go. What will you do to address this issue?
Well, maybe the city needs to buy a small bus or something like that, and make a routine where it goes. And people sign up, if they need something done at this date at a certain time, or whatever, you do it in the morning, you do it in the afternoon, follow the routine, drop the people off, and come back in the afternoon and pick them up, it might take a little bit of time, but it, we're a poor community, you know? I'm on the fixed income, I have a broken net, I still go work, I have a hard time getting around the two, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's just, uh, code enforcement needs to start enforcing the codes. And if, uh, ordinances don't allow it, change the ordinance, and make it where they can. That way they can keep the city clean, just like Bucks across the street finally got it cleaned up, and I got yelled at for bringing that up about the city being the one to clean it up. But that's okay, 'cause you know what? It's a hell, hell of a lot better now than what it was before, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Luanna? How do you feel about the public transportation options in our city? Many residents in Aransas Pass are homebound and cannot afford to leak it to where they need to go. What will you do to address this issue?
Well, right now currently, all we have is YellowCap, which is very challenging. The YellowCap may not work at times, the demand can be down on medical or mechanical issues. At the same time, there may be an hour wait, so it's not very reliable, is what I have heard from people who have told me that they use YellowCap. Um, I'm sure they're trying their hardest, by absolutely one hundred percent, but I think we can do better. Uh, do we have Uber and Lyft? Of course, but can, if you're on a fixed income, can you really afford Uber and Lyft? Uh, I do think it's highly important that we get these people who are homebound out and about into our community for their mental health, if nothing else. Uh, they don't deserve to have to sit at home, I do not believe one item will be enough to sustain our little town. Um, I think we're gonna need maybe a couple, uh, whether it be a, a couple of vans, a couple of buses, I, maybe a couple of trolleys, or maybe one of each, I don't know the answer to that. That would be involved talking to fellow councilmen and coming up with a solution that would best a five-seat issue. Um, but I think as a city, we absolutely can do something better, or do something for our citizens, to give them a better quality of life, and that's what I would do.
Thank you, Luanna.
Excuse me.
Ruth, how do you feel about the public transportation options in our city? Many residents in Aransas Pass are homebound and cannot afford to leak it to where they need to go. What will you do to address this issue?
I don't know if our city is large enough to actually have public transportation, and I think that's more available in bigger cities. I do know that there could be a possibility of outsourcing, that, um, public transportation, like maybe getting with like a trolley, or, um, maybe a smaller public transportation to come out here certain days of the week. I agree with Luanna, our, um, they need to be out. I, I, recently my mom had an accident, and she can't drive, so I offered to get delivered, um, food delivery to our house, and she was very against it, she's, she wants to go shop for her own food. So I think having a mechanism for them is gonna be important. I would have to see what other, other smaller cities are using, and maybe we could learn from them, and maybe outsource that public transportation and get them to come to Aransas certain days of week, or at certain periods, you know, times, we'd have to work with them, and see what, what can be done.
Andy, how do you feel about the public transportation options in our city? Many residents in Aransas Pass are homebound and cannot afford to leak it to where they need to go. What will you do to address this issue?
Well, it's something that's not been thought of, you know, since we're a small town, but it's, it's an idea that we have to maybe come up with something sitting here. Well, I've had a few minutes to think about it, and, uh, if, if we could get a small bus, I mean, but I think if we involve surrounding cities to get involved with us, maybe they could help us with the finances and that, that way they can have a big route, because Corpus Christi, you know, they got, they go around through certain areas of town, all that, they make their round, right? Well, if we, I don't know, I don't think the city would be able to afford in our city for just, by the second, you gotta pay that person to drive, right, so that'd be somebody else you gotta pay. And we're, uh, forty million dollars a damn for this, there was something we could work out as, as a council. But if that couldn't work, then maybe we could pitch in with, uh, the surrounding towns if they don't have one. And then, uh, maybe make a schedule, right, for these, for this driver, you know? Certain time in the morning on a Monday or a Wednesday and a Friday here, and then, uh, in the afternoon in other towns, and, you know, that way the people could look, look at the schedule, and then they could, uh, be there to get picked up at those times, and they get back dropped off from where they're going, gotta go, and they come back. You know, that's something real quick that maybe we could do, uh, my opinion.
Thank you. Jason? How do you feel about the public transportation options in our city? Many residents in Aransas Pass are homebound and cannot afford to leak it to where they need to go. What will you do to address this issue?
Well, until about, somewhere around twenty years ago, the city of Aransas Pass actually owned a minivan, and they would park it at the housing authority, and if you had someone that needed a ride to a doctor to visit, pharmacy, HEB, as long as it was within reason, wouldn't halfway across the state, they'd get a city employee, go pick up the van, and go pick up that person, take where they need to go, wait on them, and drop them off back home. I think something like that would be a good idea to look into, because we already have city employees, so if you got an employee that's caught over in for today, you can send them to go pick up the van. And I mean, the cost would just be the vehicle itself, so I think realistically, cost effectively, in my opinion, that's probably the best route to look at right now in the current financial state we're in.
Thank you. Go ahead, Andy.
Okay.
All right, number eight, where are your favorite places to spend time in our town, and how would you improve them?
Well, for me, it's, uh, the harbor, uh, all my life been, uh, going down there fishing, swimming, whatever. Uh, working, I even worked down there after I graduated before I went to the military. Uh, but now it's, it's a favorite place to take the grandkids to the pier to fish, or take them across the bridge right there on the right-hand side, as soon as you cross over. As an old person wanting to catch, uh, redfish, or, uh, even drum, this time of year, you can catch drum, uh, I would, I love to spend time on that side of the bridge. Uh, for many, many years, since I've been back in the military, uh, with them a lot of wading fishing there. So that's my favorite place to go, and what I would do to improve that, I mean, they're talking about maybe making that area into a beach, right? And if, if that goes through, okay, but if it doesn't go through, uh, I, I, my thought is to, uh, to turn that into a waiting spot, right? Uh, people, uh, the harbor's full over there with boats every morning, I mean, it's full packed, right? But there's people that can't afford a boat, right? And then they come to the area, you go to HB in the morning, so you catch some people coming from out of town, and I've talked to several of them over time, and they're all going to, most of them are going to Port Aransas. They're just stopping here to get the equipment, cokes, whatever, something to eat, whatever, and then they're on their way. So if we could, uh, build that area up for people to wade fish, put tables out there, uh, make it known, put signs out there, put it on the internet. I know a lot of good waiting spots, many, many good waiting spots. And you could go wading fishing anywhere, but you might not catch a fish. You could go to the harbor every weekend, and you see people out there wading fishing, or they're not actually wading fishing, they're fishing right there on the side of the water, and they can sit out there all weekend, they ain't gonna catch nothing, right? They're having a good time, 'cause it's, it's what, but they come over here to fish, right? And the times, for many years, I've gone up there, and I, I walk and or run around the harbor, and sometimes I'll stop to talk to the people, and I had ran into one person that's caught something down there. So if we could, uh, build that up, right, going across, but my favorite is going across the bridge, fishing on that right-hand side, and if we could build that up for tourism, uh, if the, if the beach thing doesn't work, that, that would be great, but that's where I'd like to go.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask.
I know, it's confusing to everybody, trying to make your favorite city difficult.
I just joked.
What are your favorite places to spend time in our town, and how would you improve them, Ruth?
I like being outdoors, I think if y'all, you've met me, you've seen me out walking or running, um, with some of the community members in town. I think increasing our parks, like, well, probably just making it better, I would say, um, adding some walking trails, I would love to see bike trails. Um, that, that would just be great, I think that, you know, that would get more people outdoors. Um, our parks are great, I think they do need some upkeep, I take my grandkids out to the parks, and that's probably what I use the most in town, they love being, it's a low-cost method of getting outdoors and taking your family to go do something, you can pack a cooler and sandwiches, it's not too expensive. And we do have some nice parks, but just taking care of them. You know, a, a big part of growing and taking care of our, our city is what we have. is what we have, just making sure that it's in good condition. You know, the kids aren't gonna fall and get splinters or anything because the, the equipment's not suitable for them. So I like that. And I also want, the, the big thing that I would like to see for the youth is some basketball courts. Um, I know Jason mentioned soccer fields and the pickleball. Forgot that. Basketball, basketball's huge. We have, we have very limited, um, basketball courts. They have the one at the, um, AC Blunt Middle School and then they have the one at the Veterans Park. Um, but we need something big and that can, you know, that the kids can use, you know? My, uh, my grandkids did basketball in, in Ingleside and I'd love to have some places for them to go and in town. It'd be nice if we could, you know, incorporate like, like what Jason said, more areas for the youths, for the youth, the soccer fields, the pickleball, basketball courts. If we did that, I think it would be huge for our city and for our youth because you hear families just saying, we don't have anywhere to take our kids. You have two parks or the aquatic center and bowling's full sometimes with the leagues, so they have to go elsewhere. So let's make some things that maybe aren't as costly and can be done for families to improve, um, improve services here and recreation lots of these for our kids.
Thank you, Ruth. Luann? Where are your favorite places to spend time in our town? And how would you improve them?
Thank you for asking. This is actually my favorite one. I couldn't wait for you to get to. Downtown, obviously. We own a business downtown, but I also live downtown. I absolutely love downtown and want to revitalize downtown. How do you revitalize downtown? You bring people downtown. How do you bring people downtown? You give them a reason to come downtown. If we can get them to come downtown, get them to spend money downtown and support local businesses. Currently, the city puts one event downtown on a year. Party Bar. And as far as staying, that they're moving into the harbor this next year, but yet everybody's saying we wanna revitalize downtown, but yet you take away Party Bar. What's gonna happen to downtown, correct? Salsa Fest, that's another event downtown. Um, we have got to bring events. The Rialto Theater, Lulana Market. This coming year, uh, seven events that are happening downtown. We are responsible for five. Um, starting with our Halloween maze and toy drive. That starts in October. With that toy drive, we also went into a Rialto Theater free toy shop on Sergeant Dennis Anders. That fell in our lap. We had, the, the toy drive actually did. Um, we actually had one month and three days to execute. In that one month and three days, on very first year, not knowing really what we were doing other than my experience operation-wise and being held playing positions I held previously. We blessed a hundred and seventy-one families. We gave toys to four hundred and forty-seven kids and not one person was turned away. And we raised two thousand and sixteen dollars, but we raised a ton of toys. So after that, oh, we did do a car show with it, but it was a very small car show. It was off the hip. This year, we're gonna do a car motorcycle show. So that will be the seventh event coming up. And I'm looking to do that in September. Um, we do have an Autismer Worn-Us Concert and fundraiser, which is happening this, this year, April twelfth. This, I believe, is our second year. This year, we're starting our very first free Easter egg hunt for our community. Again, if we don't bring people downtown, how, why would they wanna come downtown? I love running down outside on Saturday morning or Friday morning if I'm not working and visiting with people and say, hey, how are you? Have you been in theater? Would you like to come in? Where are you from? What brings you here? We have got to make our tourists feel welcomed. So they want to come back. We need friendly faces. We all need to learn to be friendly people and make our, our visitors feel welcomed. They come in here, they spend money. So that's what I would do. Bring people downtown, give them a reason to come downtown if elected to place three, May third.
Thank you, Luann. Luann, I'm gonna give you another question and then we'll go back to Richard. If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
It, control expenses. We have got to control expenses. How do you control expenses? Inventory. Check expense reports. Get people in positions who you trust to monitor those expense reports and make sure, audit them, make phone calls. Hey, did you receive this? It's, it's really very simple. Um, at the same time, taxes. Yes, they lower our tax rate, but they increase our property value. So guess what? We're paying more taxes. No, that needs to stop. People are not gonna live here if our tax rate continues to go higher and higher. Uh, grants. There's so much money our city could get if we could apply for grants. We just need to start applying. That would save our city a bunch of money and it's free money. We could use that money for infrastructure. We could use it for parks and recreation and so forth to beautify our city. But yet, we're not applying for grants as often as we possibly should. You know, hot tax can't pay for everything. We've not, we've got to use the resources available to us to help us get to where we wanna go. And that's what I would do if elected, place three, May third.
Thank you, Luann. We'll go back to Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're on my right.
Where are your favorite places to spend time in our town? And how would you improve them?
Unfortunately, I don't get to spend time with any of the places in town. I'm in the middle of building my own house and I work only seven days a week and that's all I do. And I've done pretty good and built it so far in two years and two months. But anyway, then in another, maybe another park over here in this side of town where it's easier for some of the kids and stuff to get to or open a game room that doesn't sell alcohol. Get, give the children somewhere to go to keep them off the streets instead of running around doing dope and getting them with the wrong gangs of people and things like that. Start up, start a little league. Do we have a little league team here? We do, okay. That's new to me. I don't have kids anymore, so I'm not into that realm, uh, right now. Thank the Lord. But, you know, I, I'm just thinking a game room, some other facilities somewhere to keep the kids on a straight and narrow path instead of the dropping, rolling.
Thank you. And we'll go to Ruth. Ruth, if elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Okay, so step one, I think would be to increase the partnerships with, um, public and private entities. If we could do that, we could increase our tax revenue. Um, there'd be more money coming. Um, another thing we could do is in a, kind of in the same aspect, is just increase the business growth and development. That's gonna increase our tax base. If we get more money in taxes, we can use those funds to do the things that need to be done in the city, like fixing our streets, um, working on infrastructure. You know, those are, that's important. And another thing I'd like to see is just increase, increasing foot traffic. Um, if you get those businesses here, working with, you know, the chamber to increase tourism, um, into the area. I've said it, we need our tax dollars spent here. We need that money spent here. We, we have so much that we could do here instead of going to other cities to spend that money and other businesses. Let's use that money here. And I think just bringing in more people is gonna do that. Um, the shrimp parade going to the harbor, I think is a great idea. Like Jason said, it's gonna put more eyes on the harbor. People are gonna go there that maybe don't fish or don't own a boat. So you're gonna get more eyes out there. Maybe, you know, a developer will say, oh, I wanna get, you know, a new, a, a really nice restaurant, something besides Mexican food would be nice. But we can do that and, you know, that's gonna increase tourism. That's gonna get people to come because it's nice to have lunch by the water. You know, you don't have, you don't have, you don't have that in Portland. You know, you, I don't think you do. I don't think of any restaurants you could go eat at on the water, but we can do that here. And so just bringing those tax dollars and keeping them here in Oransas, I think is, is important.
Thank you. Andy? If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Well, firmer to me means, uh, like, watch where the money goes, you know? Thank you. Um, I think through the, through this last eight, ten years, they haven't been watching where the money's gone, most of the council. And they've done and spent money the way they wanted to. I think it's stopped now since some of the people are gone and with new council and existing council, I think some of that's gone or most of that's gone. But the excessive spending, I think with, just with the excessive spending that they were doing, uh, I think that's gonna, that's a pretty good foot. Um, uh, watching how, you know, where that money goes from now on. Uh, I think, uh, bringing in people to, uh, to, if you have to do an audit, to stop, you know, to find out where the money goes, uh, in my opinion, you know? Uh, sometimes we don't, we haven't always known where the money goes and, and, and then we don't, it's, it's not included in the budget. Census spending, uh, I think all that needs to stop. And it's, it's a firmer grip on, uh, on the budget where, uh, like, like what I've heard, right? Some of these people, they, they've had a, a money card, right? And they've just been able to use it any way they wanted to. You know, from the, I don't wanna bring the, say certain names or certain groups, but, uh, they were just able to do what they wanted to and spend the way they wanted to. And, uh, that's, that, that's something that, you know, that I would make sure, like, these guys are on there now. They wanna stop that. So, uh, you know, and just census spending, it goes a lo, a long way with that.
Thank you, Andy. One second. I wanted to announce with the room, a reminder that this is a voter's registration drive. If you want to register to vote, Jenny is right over here registering people to vote. Um, without further ado, we will continue with number nine. Jason? If elected, what three steps would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
Well, step one, I've been trying to get through change since I've been on council. The way the budget process works here, and I never understood it. There's a budget committee. You have one council member and the other members are department heads or city employees. We need to do it like it's done in every other city and how it used to be here where we'll have three or four workshops in the afternoon when people work and hit the ten. And we'll do line by line where the department head is part of the council as a whole. That way, if a council member or myself is part of the budget committee, someone asks, well, what's all in the police budget? He said, I don't know, it wouldn't matter. All the council members and the mayor should know what every dime is being spent. And when you do line by line, you can ask that department head, what's this for? What's that for? You don't need this, we can wait on this. That's the only way you're gonna get in control of the spending through the budget. And step two, that goes back to my economic development director. We need the neutral. Something's broken around this passage because we have been stagnant on getting new solid businesses in this town for a long time. So we need to do something different. And I'm going back to the economic development director because I think for the work, it will help accelerate getting new commercial businesses in town. And step three goes back to permits. Streamline permits, make them where they are cost-effective and it's easier for a builder or developer to set up shop in Oransas Pass.
Thank you, Jason. We'll go down to Andy. Andy? How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
First, I'm gonna say that's why this guy needs to be the man because, you know, it's, it's, it sounds like he knows what he's talking about. And, uh, he just makes me feel good every time he talks because, uh, it's all good things, so. You know, hopefully I, he can, I can cover his back and sit beside him up there. But anyway, um, yeah, because he, he just knows what's going on. Um, how would I involve residents in the decision-making process in our town? When it comes to big, big decisions, as a council, um, you don't wanna make mistakes that's been made with previous council and with big decisions like a fire station, like they did and other decisions, um, that they should've as a council voted to let the people vote for that so they could be part of that. Uh, you know, you wanna advertise, you know, to, so people can vote, internet, you know, Facebook, whatever it takes to, to make that work. But, uh, I, I would definitely, on anything to a certain level, uh, the way I feel about the people and about the town, I don't wanna leave them out with certain decisions. So, uh, I don't know how often it's brought up. I've been coming to a lot of meetings and, and, you know, I guess they, uh, over the last two and a half years, three years. But what I would do on, on a big decision, I, I, I'm gonna say, well, maybe this is something we need to involve the people, you know, let them vote on it, you know? And then just go from there and see how we handle that. But I, that's how I would wanna involve people.
Thank you. Ruth, how would you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
That is a great question. I've already been learning so much from the residents just during the campaign, um, and running for place one. There's not one conversation that's been had with a resident where I haven't learned something. Um, just today, I had, um, a citizen in Oransas telling me that she didn't wanna tell me her complaint because she has said the same thing for the past five, six, seven years and nothing's changed. And that, that just is disappointment when you hear a resident say that. Like, I don't even wanna tell you because nothing's gonna happen. I've already been down this road a hundred times. So you gotta show up for these people. We, we are working for the citizens of Oransas Pass. There's been a lot of self-interest in the past and I think it's, it, it needs to stop. Um, the citizens deserve better. They deserve to be heard. And that's where when, you know, where I feel like when I'm speaking with them and listening, listening to them and you hear their concerns, it's not just, okay, I'm just listening and not gonna do anything about it. Like, you, you have to take action. You have to say, okay, what am I gonna do to help this person? Because they're tired. It's been three, four, five, six years and nothing has happened for them. And I really wanna make that difference. And that's, that's where I think I can make a difference with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luann? How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
Speak with them, hear them, listen to them. Um, help them under, well, with the Charter Review Committee, we did make a recommendation that any major expense over eight million dollars needs to go for a vote. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe it should be on the ballot for the citizens to vote, yes, they do want to vote for eight million or more. And it should be on the ballot, if I'm not mistaken, this may go with the rest of them. I'm not mistaken, this may go with the rest of them. Why there's been no advertising about what's supposed to be on the ballot made there, I have no idea, but that was my understanding, that it's supposed to be on the ballot for a vote by the citizens if they do, in fact, want to have a voice in an expense over $8 million. Charter review can only happen twice or once every two years. It's very important that we, as a city, make certain we update that charter, one, legally, for Texas law, and two, with what our constituents want. Because yes, we will be working for the citizens of Aransas Pass. We don't work for ourselves. We need to do what they want us to do, do it with integrity, do it with transparency, and do it to the best of our ability. And that's what I would do if elected, place three major.
Thank you, Linda. Richard? How would you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
You have to go out and speak with the people. It's like you stated, you have to go out and speak with them, find out what their concerns are, let them know that you feel their pain because it involves us as well, whether we're candidates or not, and listen to them, understand them, tell them, "I'll do the best that I can." It's just not, let us, tell us your opinions, what needs to be done so that we can listen to you, so that we can try to work on it and fix it, because it's the same issues and problems in this town with everybody, not just a few people here or a few people there. Just go out and talk to them, make sure they know they're heard.
Thank you, Jason. We'll go ahead and give to Jason on number 10. Jason, how do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our town?
I've been doing it the whole time I've been on council. It's like, I talk to Mr. Guzman, and I'm Frank, city manager's office, I'll get your answer tomorrow. I mean, it's that simple. You can get a lot more accomplished on the phone than you can in a regular council meeting because it's always taking somebody to call if you have a question. Just make the effort, call City Hall, talk to whatever department head or employee you need to. All everybody wants is an answer. They want, can you do this or can't you do that? As long as you're straight up and honest with them, they'll be happy with whatever answer you give them, and I won't change a thing on how I've been involved in the residents in Aransas Pass since they want to be elected to council.
Thank you, Jason. We'll go ahead, Andy, with the next question. I'm getting confused with the double questions, so I don't have to do that anymore. All right.
Good, it's the last question, almost anyway.
Yes, we're almost there. Um, let's see. We're going to go to number 11, that's the last one. Your job involves compromise and working well with others in order to get things done. What are your qualifications in diplomacy, and how have you dealt with high emotions surrounding your job in the past?
Well, my qualifications are being in the higher positions as I work my way up in the field, and dealing with clients from these different oil companies. And being in their meetings, sometimes they all, it didn't always go well, and you have to, you have to meet them in the middle sometimes, and sit across from them and just work with them and listen to them, and they got to listen to you also because if I'm dealing with the client, if I'm representing the client, it usually, there was usually a bigger oil company, depending where I was at. But if there was any kind of disagreements where you always wanted to walk out of there with nothing, no ill feelings on the contract or a bad decision or anything like that, so you always want to try to be the middleman, depending on the position that I've been, and just try to work with both sides, whether it's the resident, whether it's another city council member, whether it's the city manager, the police chief, wherever it might be, just work with them and talk to them and just try to get the best deal done regardless, you know, regardless of what it is.
Thank you very much. Go ahead to Ruth. Ruth, your job involves compromise and working well with others in order to get things done. What are your qualifications in diplomacy, and how have you dealt with high emotions surrounding your job in the past?
I'm a nurse. That alone, you have to deal with patients, doctors, families. A lot of those times, those conversations are not pleasant. You have to have those hard conversations sometimes, and it can be very trying and difficult. In addition, you're in situations sometimes that are very intense. Life or death is at your hands, and if you're not on your toes, and if you're not sharp as a tactic, you didn't have your cup of coffee that morning, your adrenaline's going to kick in anyway because you know. And so I feel that my history and experience is going to help me make good decisions for the city. Is it always perfect? No, but I think an important part of growing and being an effective leader is circling back and finding out, like, did we do everything right? And that's a way that I think you're going to see me work as a council member across with my leadership team, with Jason and Randy and the other council members that are elected. I think that's one of the things that I, you're going to really, you're going to see that in me, is that I'm willing to do that. We're not always going to agree, you know, that's not going to happen, but we do have to make the best decisions for the citizens of Aransas Pass.
Thank you. Llena, your job will involve compromise, working well with, and working well with others in order to get things done. What are your qualifications in diplomacy, and how have you dealt with high emotions surrounding your job in the past?
I have been in sales for 32 years of my adult life. For 32 years, I've had to be very diplomatic. I have dealt with people from various parts of the world, not necessarily just from the United States. I have learned extremely well how to listen, how to negotiate, fully understand, and fully understand that I may not always get my way, and that's okay. It's imperative that when there is an issue at hand, that when you're speaking to somebody who may be emotional, that you listen, you stop talking, one. Two, if you listen, let them tell you what they want to tell you, then you say, "Okay, I want to make sure I'm understanding you and hearing you correctly. Is this what you are telling me?" And let them confirm, "Yes, this is what I'm telling you." That will typically appease them and will help negate the situation drastically, and then, only then can you find a solution. Until emotions are gone, set aside. As council members, we have got to be transparent. We have got to remain with most of integrity, but more importantly, we have got to have respect for each other to be able to work together, regardless of who you are, regardless of what side of the table you are, regardless of who wins this time, because next time, the other person who didn't win will get their way. It's, you have to give and take, but you have to give and take for the best interest of our city and our citizens. That's what I would do if elected, place three major.
Thank you, Lynn. Richard? Your job will involve compromise and working well with others in order to get things done. What are your qualifications in diplomacy, and how have you dealt with high emotions surrounding your job in the past?
My qualifications are I've worked with the government, the counties, the public, state, many cities, involving issues pertaining to the plumbing industry that I'm in. I was a licensed plumber for 47 years. I've got 30 years as a supervisor. I've also discussed with many of state officials, government officials and everything else involving inspections, codes. I've been involved in many decision-makings to fix a lot of problem-solving things that nobody else could, whether it's either in commercial, whether it's a business, whether it's an apartment complex, whether it's just a house, or even helping people out here in the general public, you know? I do my best to help them. I've got an answer for them, but I don't always have an answer for myself. But that's what I feel my qualifications are. I've learned by being that supervisor, you have to step up and take care of a lot of things that most other people in the plumbing industry wouldn't have to deal with. That's what you get when you become a supervisor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard, and Jason, we'll give that last question to you. Jason, your job will involve compromise and working well with others in order to get things done. What are your qualifications in diplomacy, and how have you dealt with high emotions surrounding your job in the past?
Lots of Dale Carnegie and a lot of patience, and it's, a couple people said up here, everyone sitting up here is asking for everyone's vote to sit on those council seats. We can't just walk in there and take those seats. So whether it's your best friend or your worst enemy, if someone, the resident of Aransas Pass owns a business here, you have to cater to their needs. You have to put all your personal things aside. Whenever someone walks in City Hall, and friendship, personal stuff needs to stay outside because whenever we're sitting in these council seats, we're overseeing some very important, it's hard-earned tax dollars for the citizens of Aransas Pass, and they're trusting us to make the best decisions on how to spend that money. It all goes back to communication with people in town. I mean, you have to talk to anyone. You have to make yourself an open book and talk to people because everybody knows the past few years, we had a pretty rocky time in this town, and that could have all been handled with open face-to-face communication. So that is a most important thing that any elected official should have front foremost during these most seats.
Thank you, everybody. That is all I've got for you. I want to thank you all so much for coming. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone else, for coming today.
Ms. Reels? Can I say something?
Oh, yes. I would like, if you did want to say something, if you would acknowledge this integrity first before you say it. If you acknowledge these integrity rules, then I have no problem with what you want to say.
Ladies and gentlemen, y'all that have showed up here, and they know me, I'm Randy Haskins, I'm councilman, place four. This is my first year being city councilman. I want you to take note. These people here have all a bunch of diverse ideas. They've got good ideas. They have spoken about things that I wouldn't even have thought about, and they've brought this type of delight to me. You have a man here for running for mayor versus opposition.
Not here.
You've got three of them that are running here for council for place, three. Where's their opposition? You've got one running for place one. Where's her opposition? People, these people are interested in this job, the same as I'm interested in it, and I want to work with a diverse group of people and people that mean something to this community. Take note of that when you go to the polls. Who has your best interest at heart? These people are the people that did show. I want to thank everybody. I think this was a good deal. Like I said, I learned a lot. I think everybody else here learned a lot. And whoever wins these slots, I'd be most proud to work with. Thank you. Thank all y'all.